I'm just at last minute. Joel's gonna lead us in activity. Did Joel mess that up?
What was that?
Do we need to do a picture?
I tried to.
Oh, it's really nice.
How are you?
We have some chairs and everything.
Most of our family pictures have me facing the other way here, so.
It is 6:30. I'll call our Monday, October 7th meeting. Joel.
I am here.
Yeah? Here.
Here.
Sarah?
Sarah.
Carly?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
I'm here and we have Scott in hand for Dr. Slar.
Thanks, Brad, any?
Has our meeting been properly announced?
Yes, thanks.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to be permitted to hear this?
Hi, Ken. The Montmoreaux area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. Number two, approval of our agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Carly. All those in favor of approving our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our September 16th, 2024 board regular meeting?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Carly and then seconded by Tom to approve our September 16th board regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approval of our September 30th joint board meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve our meeting minutes?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Adam, seconded by Sarah to approve their September 30th joint board meeting, the village, the chamber, and the school district meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Last one, approval of our September 30th board workshop meeting minutes. Would anyone make a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Carly to approve our September 30th board workshop meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Please. No longer have any students rumor of their board.
Well, let me fill you on that. So a lot of you know, but their homecoming was recently. And they decided rather than to save their voices for this board meeting, they were going to ruin them having fun, which I don't think they should have done. That's what they chose to do with their kids and they choose to do things like that. So they said maybe they would try next time, but they were pretty harsh. We read it at the end of the day, like, you know what? I don't think they want to sound bad and so it justified me so. So we'll get them here in the future.
Maybe you could take them home.
They were a little cold. We were just warming up outside and we just.
I didn't mean that you could say, I meant that you could post that music.
Oh, well, we'll get our duetted next time too then. Well, thank you, thank you. So I think you have some notes in your board stuff. We've been invited to London at this point. It's kind of a little bit of an open invitation, given that we've been there twice. Would have gone a third time had COVID not canceled. So the way it works is they reach out to you, seeing if you're interested, but it's kind of an invitation. I think those first couple of times, you do have to be formally invited. And this time, it's like, if you're interested, then come back, let us kind of know. So last year, I kind of said, well, you know, tell me the process because Will's gone. And they let me know what the process was. We started doing that this year before we could go out to parents with a survey to try to get some information as far as, you know, the amount of interest and things like that. We want to make sure we come to you first and give you the information about what the trip is, kind of how it works, and then kind of get that approved so that we can start seeing what interest there is and maybe going forward, maybe not, but that's kind of our next step. Should approval happen tonight, our next step would be to send out a survey. It's really two questions, you know, are you interested? And if yes, would you be able to help with fundraising, being those roles in two questions? And then we'll see by the end of the week, kind of what the interest would be and go from there. So it's really very loose, but that's kind of where it is right now. So that's it. I think the information you have has just kind of been nuts and bolts. It's basically the trip dates. It's, you know, from a little bit before the break of winter next year over to New Year's. I think it's maybe January 3rd. And then, you know, obviously we're going to London, so it's an overnight trip. As far as that goes, you know, we wouldn't miss school. I know there was that weird Friday where we would potentially have school, and I'm told that would be a non-school day and we'll come back. So kids will be well rested. We've gone on the trip a couple of times before, even though I haven't led the trip. I went last time and helped plan it at the time they got canceled. So we're confident we can make it a success. That's where we head. And with that, wondering if anybody has any questions about any of this here?
How many kids have been able to go this time?
I think our first time ever, 2008, was about 73 or so. The last time was 104, and the next time after that that was canceled was going to be like 140. Yeah, it was popular. But it's a really cool event. This is really popular. You can't perform for a half million people. Just, I mean, it's London, so everything's packed. So the streets, sometimes, I mean, you're marching, you know, and they're just here, here, and here. And because it's the old, you know, United Kingdom, I mean, they're broadcasting to an audience of about 300 million on TV. So it's just as electric as it can possibly be. So yeah, it's very cool. You know, the Queen was there doing her thing last time. You know, I'm sure Charles will wave as well. So yeah, it was just cool.
Remember, you do it pretty well on fundraising for those as well, right?
Yeah, I think last time we did it, again, last time was canceled, so it's just hard for me to. None of the fundraisers really had a chance to roll a whole lot. I don't know if it's possible to raise all the money. Maybe it is, maybe it doesn't. I know for our New Year's trip that we just did this past June, some kids got, you know, close. They did two-thirds, which given, you know, a four or five-month fundraising period that we do was pretty good. This would be well over a year. We did a lot of fundraisers last time. I think we probably had 25 planned out. Maybe 19 of those were done given, and then out of those, obviously a lot didn't happen. But the time before, we had a lot of successful fundraisers. And people are willing to kind of step up and do it because it's expensive. So we end up having more buy-in because of that too.
Remember, there was a trunk at World of Variety that people were stuffing money in for the trip. That was not this last time, it was the time before.
Yeah.
There was a lot of.
Oh, World of Variety.
You said that with a little bit of nostalgia.
Who knows about World of Variety?
So this is for students nine through 12 that are in music, band, voice?
Well, we're not exactly sure how that part's going to work yet, which is why we wanted to do the survey. It's always been band because obviously it's parade. The band will go march in the parade. Last time, there was also an opportunity for kids to inquire to then sing also in a cathedral with an organ. But all that fell through, and so we really don't know exactly how it works because we've never done it. So we'll approach it a little bit with kind of like same as last time, and then let's see how it worked. But we really don't know until we get parent surveys back.
Sure. I would love to send Lucy different.
It's about the safe and easy of a trip to. Everybody speaks English, right? All the signs are in English. And then it's, the weather's always, you know, cold and rainy, but it's like 55, 60. So like, you know, it's never too hot, too cold. So it ends up, for all those like travel reasons too, it just ends up working out. And then they have a really slick organization, the group that puts this together. This is what they do. So they bring over 75 bands a year. Everything is bound to a science, you know, they're very slick. In a good way.
Any other questions or comments? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Well, I'll second that.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Sarah to approve the Mountmore High School music trip to London for New Year's Day Parade and not till next year.
Be next year, over to 2026. Oh, thank you very much.
Wait, we didn't actually vote. I have one more quick question. How old do you have to be to chaperone?
Oh, I have it in my, I don't remember off the top of my head if. So kind of in preparation for this, I made a London website page and the information is on there. I think you might have to be 21, but I'm sure there's a board policy for it. I think you have to be 21 to officially chaperone. But I don't know for sure. But I would know if I could go look at the website.
I just, there are some kids who didn't get to go to London who might be interested in, who are going to be of that age, who might be interested in chaperoning, although they won't have any siblings at school at that point, so maybe Tom. This is a hypothetical.
If you're talking about sending Nikki out of the country for a week, we'll take her. Yeah, she'd be great out. No, I get what you're saying. And then the last time, we did have a lot of people that were scheduled to go because 140 kids were plus chaperones. I mean, we had a big group and just all, like everything. But I think that's a, that must be a board policy of something, but I'm not sure what it is.
Nope, we don't have one. Not that I'm aware of.
Will had a hard and fast rule of something that I'd have to look up.
I know some of these, the companies themselves.
That's what I'm wondering.
I know for New York, I think they specifically had an age you had to be 21, but like.
Yeah, this is one of the many details. I used all Will's stuff to make all my stuff. We met for a solid hour a couple of times and talked through it. There is a, I think it's 21, but I'm not sure why that's a hard and fast. But I bet you if it's not the board, it's probably the company. But obviously, you know, now that we're, well, I guess we haven't proved it. But as we talk a little bit more, this is the kind of stuff that keeps coming up and we keep finding answers to, so I can certainly find that out.
I think chaperones should have the side read of Class A piece.
I think so too.
I mean, come on, Mel.
If that's the things I want to do.
Definitely advanced piece, huh? I could maybe win it.
Precussion specifically.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. All those in favor of approving the music trip to London, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Kellen.
Like I said, I'm literally going to my desk right now, send out that survey. We should have some good results by the end of the week and know more. There are already breathing down my neck about sending the, you know, Lincoln navigators with the little ear pieces and the sunglasses and the case and stuff. They want to do that next week. So it's like, oh my gosh. So who knows? But this will be nice to kind of say an official yes and we can move forward from there. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks for your.
Thanks, Kellen. We've obviously skipped B on the agenda because they are, must have been a mistake on the date or something.
The only thing I conclude is maybe they're thinking seven, seven, seven.
Oh, that's true. I'm guessing they are because Rachel's not here, the teacher's not here.
None of them are here, that's what I'm.
Right, yeah, I was like.
We've had that happen before after the time change.
So we'll just kind of keep going. So Ryan, do you want to?
Hey, Ryan. Hey. I'm Ryan Finley and the baseball coach here in Mount Orban. Asking to see if we can take the team back to Florida. We went last year on spring break. Had a great time, took 41 in our traveling party from the high school and the coaches. Parents, a lot of parents went down. We had a lot of fun and played a lot of baseball. This year's trip, I'm looking to see if we can do a little different transportation-wise and trying to make things a little cheaper for families since we're trying to go on a one-year basis here. The bus last year, we took a coach bus overnight, had a lot of interesting times and some fun. Even for my age, we had a lot of good stories in that bus. But the coach bus is about $25,000 transportation-wise. And the families that had to go went as well. Obviously, many of them flew, some of them drove, but then they rented cars on top of the cost of paying for their their son to hop in the bus with us and all that. Baseball City we used last year in Florida, which is a great place, operation. This year, looking to make things again cheaper for the families because we can't play games this year. Baseball season, WIA season's pushed back about a week, so our first week of actual practice this year is that first Monday of spring break, according to WIA rules. And we have to have seven days of practice in before we can have a game. So we'd be looking to practice down there. I have a coach from Baribou, a friend that coached down in Lemon Bay, Inglewood, Florida, just south of St. Petersburg and north of Fort Myers on the ocean there. And he hooked me up with their AD down there and said we'd be able to use their facilities for practices. He said we have a baseball facility, a softball facility, and some other open grass. Because my guess is we'd have around 30 to maybe 35 kids that'd want to go again. Some very talented kids, even though we can't play other programs, we'd be able to scrimmage ourselves and get a lot of work in down there, plus some team bonding, some beach time, lots of families wanting to go. So see if we can make that work. I know Dr. Slar was looking into the piece about the legality of the transportation portion of that. So we'd make sure all the kids are transported via either flights or car, depending on how the families want to travel down to Florida. And then we'd be getting some VRVOs. There's a nice housing area down there. It's got lots of VRVOs that are about 10 minutes off the beach. So we'd all be kind of staying in that same community and spending less time down there for that spring break. So check and see if I can get permission to go forward with that or. And the transportation piece as well would be different to what we had last year.
One thing to share with the board members is to Brian's point about connecting with Steve. I did shout out to our insurance agent. They reviewed, thank you, you provided a waiver, I think that a neighboring district used in the past. They gave their thumbs up. Of course, our insurance agent, as typical, and I would expect this. They also recommended that we just contact our attorney to just make sure that, you know, everything is up to speed in terms of where it needs to be at. Of course, if a parent's driving, you know, a few students, if something happens, of course, their insurance is always primary. We would make sure that that's disclosed on the waiver as well. We have not connected with the attorney other than that our insurance agent gave a thumbs up, pending discussion with our attorney.
Does the waiver include recommended limits for a parent who's driving?
It does, yes. It does. I couldn't tell you.
It was assumed that we would want to collect that as a school system. It's got to be a certain.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Do you think you'd be able to scrimmage some other teams that are down there or would they?
We won't be able to scrimmage until that Saturday, so I haven't looked into it yet. But trying to scrimmage that Saturday and then make sure everyone has an opportunity to get back to school on Monday would be maybe a little hairy. I know we had, some of the families had some transportation problems flying down on the way home because there's some storms and then trying to connect. It's a busy time of year. Sockberry's baseball team was down there with us last year in Baseball City in St. Petersburg, and they flew, and they know they had connecting problems on the way home as well. So a concern of mine flying with the team was that, you know, I'm with me and my coaching staff are with 30 kids, and then our flight gets canceled. Now we got, we have Family State, we're in Dale, we have Family State in Atlanta. Trying to make sure we're all connected and supervised versus if they're flying with families or in a smaller group, at least those connections would be easier to navigate on the way home than it was for the way things went last year for our families and Sockberry's baseball team. So we got the idea. Sockberry's Bonneville's softball team did that last year where they had to, parents transport the kids down, like they went to the Gulf Shores in Alabama. And then there will make a special transportation waiver different than what was normally used throughout the school year to make that happen, so.
No latitude from the WIA.
I certainly wish. Just the way the calendar bailed this year football, I'm going to fall sports down back a week, you know, winter sports are back a week. Us going back weekend ended up right on our start of our spring break this year.
They did send a survey out to say like, hey, do you think it's dumb that we only allow five contacts during the summer? So I was like, yes. Submit. So how would the, like accommodations work? You said getting like an Airbnb type of situation, like would you have to get multiples?
Yes, we would.
And then would you have like a school staff member stationed at each one or just?
Well, it would be the families, like multiple families. I just kind of looked at some of the Airbnbs. Lots of them are anywhere between eight to 14 in a house. And then I guess my thought would be that the families that they kind of traveled with would also be the ones that would house them and supervise them. I mean, we'd be around as well. Obviously, we're dealing lots of team. That night, they'd be the ones supervising the kids that they were kind of in charge of on the travel. Most of them, I'm guessing, would be families. I'm guessing there probably a handful of kids would be the ones that would be not going with their families. So it'd be the ones that would be.
So would any of the families be trying to bring like siblings?
I'm sure they would, yeah.
So how does that work? Like would, does that go against any of our current policies? Not even that.
Not if, I mean, if a family chooses to bring, you know, other children with them, that would be part of their family.
Yeah, I don't know. Like this is a situation I don't, we've never had. Yeah.
I'm a little bit on the uncomfortable side on this one. When do you need to have a decision? Like tonight's still the night or?
No, thanks. I mean, sooner the better just for planning purposes.
Sure.
But yeah, tonight's doesn't have to be the hard deadline, no.
Do you have any specific questions?
Well, lots of things. One, it's unfortunate you can't play any games. And I think a trip like this should be designed about doing that, first of all. Secondly, the travel not being more controlled by the district and more put on family members is concerning. And then, and the housing being split up potentially is a little bit concerning too. But not any different than hotel rooms and stuff, but it sounds like this is kind of a new endeavor maybe for how we would handle travel. And I'm sure it would be fine, but I'm just a little bit on the uneasy side.
For the baseball players, obviously not for their entire families. Similar to the music trip, are there opportunities for students who might be going on their own to fundraise or to?
Oh, yeah. Yep, sure.
Any other questions, comments?
I would think that if we have our attorney look at the insurance side of things, we should be absolutely clear in terms of the transportation. That would be a concern. A VRVO to me is no different, as long as it's within a block or so of each other, we're no different. It's not a hotel.
I know some of these, like there was just the Airbnb that didn't have, you know, the fire, they didn't pass fire code and they didn't have smoke alarms and the whole thing burned down. And like, there's no regulations theoretically on Airbnb's.
We had problems with that hotel.
That's true. True. That is true.
That could be anywhere, and so that's, we would rely on the, the coaches or the chaperones on the trip to look at that. And if you're going to book a VRVO, obviously, we're going to want to use a forced article or something like that. So we don't end up with that.
Right.
Yeah.
It seems like a lot more coordination on you than.
It's just to go to the Super 8 and just everybody's there. But I know the community.
Yeah, this area is, which is a little quieter in the beaches, so they're not, the hotels quite right there. Which was nice. The Serato's a great spot. I was trying to find high schools that would accommodate.
Is this that big Rotunda neighborhood that's there?
Yeah.
Oh, they're going to be fine. All the houses in there.
Yeah.
It's a big old circular neighborhood. Everybody knows about it.
A bunch of golf courses.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, it's like staying at a hotel. It's the same thing.
That's exactly. The Rotunda West in.
I figured that's where you.
Inglewood, Florida.
I feel better. I don't want to strip opportunities from the kids, so if it goes to both, I'll be appreciative.
Yeah, it's just different. So we have to like shift our, we have to like process it a little bit more. Normally, I say, yeah, yeah, go, go, go. But now I'm like, wait, I just.
I was talking with Dr. Slar. We said we'd obviously any parents transporting or staying at houses with other athletes, not their own family, would get the background check. And just obviously to get the insurance piece, like, is it okay? That's a big one as well, so.
I mean, given like the past trips and family involvement, you don't have any concerns about not having enough adults, do you?
I don't. I think the majority of them just been talking. Last year is our first year doing it, and I was kind of thinking it'd be like an every other year type thing. And families enjoyed it so much that a lot of begging to come back and do it again because it's nice to get away during spring break. And it's hard doing to have spring sports there. You got a lot of dedicated athletes, so we're trying to build combined the best of both worlds.
And last year, what, about two-thirds of the players' parents or family members came?
Yeah.
I thought it was quite.
Yeah, we had a big contingency down there, for sure.
And because we live in Wisconsin. That being able to play outside that is not huge, so they can at least practice inside.
We'll be able to play other teams, but like I said, we have some talented kids, so it'll be a great chance to play against each other, scrimmage and let the kids compete against each other. A lot of good athletes, so it'll make it worthwhile that way.
As long as you get a shark attack over and then that's all I need.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So move.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Adam to approve the baseball team's travel to Florida for March of Spring Break. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ryan, I'll be interested to see how the proposal changes next year after all the administration.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's do that. That sounds fantastic.
Do you want to start?
You bet. Well, good evening, everyone. As you know, Steve is out and about a lot with Aubrey Hanks doing presentations on our referendum, with it being October 7th today, more or less than a month away now. So it's hard to believe you plan, 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 and it's here. So that's exciting. To all of you, thank you, school board members. It's Wisconsin School Board Week. If you haven't heard, that's this week. On behalf of the entire school community, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Those of you, a few of you have served as treasures on the board and given COVID virtual land where we're on the computer regularly. And one of the things that I share, I think, every once in a while is, gosh, you know, I've never been a board member in my personal life, but the amount of commitment that you put into this role. And it's not just, as you know, not just being at these meetings and committee meetings, but the emails and the conversations and the phone calls and the conferences and conventions and so on and so on. It goes on and on. People don't realize the amount of time that really goes into it, outside of the fact that you have a personal life, a career, a family, kids, et cetera, et cetera. So on behalf of the school community, thank you for everything that you do to support us. Next thing is tickets for the high school musical called Guys and Dolls. Went on sale today at 8:00 AM. The musical dates are from November 7th through the 9th. Next one, just want to thank everybody for all of your participation and involvement in the homecoming week last week, leading up to all the activities for the weekend. Certainly, last Friday was my first of my 16 years when I missed the parade, other than last year because of the bad weather, but everybody does. So I saw some pictures that are always shared with me. So if you had an opportunity to drive in the parade or walk in the parade, to say bow and so forth, thank you for being able to do that. And then last but not least, because I do have a platform to talk about school finance, just a couple of things about the month of October. Remember, October is an important month. October 1st, we find out our property values. We shared that with the group last Monday at the joint meeting. October 15th, we find out how much state aid we'll be receiving from the state of DPI. That leads us to that October 28th board meeting, and we'll talk about that at the end of the meeting as a reminder. October 28th is our next official board meeting. We'll look at budget and levy and all that good stuff. So thanks for remembering the important month of October and that one. Other school news?
On Friday is the PTO's Fall Costume Dance from 6:00 to 7:30. It's $5 per family, and then we're asking for donations to Neighbors Helping Neighbors. And it's a good time, and all the kids dress up and it's super cute. So if you have anything else on Fridays, come on, oh, come hang out. We're there all night.
And Kellen wasn't kidding. I just got the London email survey.
Any other school news?
I, I'm trying to, I don't think we've met since the Mental Health Wellness there on September 21st. That was an event that the Mental Health Coalition helped co-sponsor at the school. Help co-sponsor Bryant had a table air for student services information. There were students everywhere volunteering to help out with that. It seemed like, they really went, they had a whole lot of resources there, a lot of cool stuff at the event. And then unfortunately, like that was the day that a crazy thunderstorm came by in the afternoon. So I left, what happened the first half, really well-run, really cool event. cool event.
If you pull up the ski pen, you could see them all scurrying.
In addition to all of the referendum presentations, there's, I think, three this week, two next week, and then we have an open house on the 22nd at the ELC at 6:00 PM. We have an open house on the 26th at 9:00 AM at the PC. Tomorrow night is the Greater Dane County School Board Consortium meeting. Carter's gonna go with Brian to that. Wednesday is the Wasbe Regional Meeting. Carly and I are gonna go to that. November 4th, Dr. Slern, I'll put this in our weekly update, but just to remind you all, our education committee, the IB reviewer will be here. It'll be a good opportunity to listen and learn and ask questions, so we all go. That'd be fantastic. And the last thing that I would just point out is October is the most important month and I think that we all agree that we have some fantastic school leaders and we're incredibly fortunate and grateful that we have their thoughtful and committed leadership. And related to that, I think our student spotlight. I'm so very sorry.
I'm sorry that, it's at seven and a half years and it's almost 7:00 PM.
I know. We change in the summer and.
Yeah, never look at the time. That isn't important to me.
It is still 7:00 PM.
And you are exactly.
You're on time.
Well, we're, it's about time to honor Carter. Carter, you wanna come stand by me for a minute? So this is my friend Carter Dorsey, and I just need to point out, there are so many staff here supporting Carter, from former teachers, from even kindergarten. That's how much they also agree with this important nomination. So I, can I share what your teacher wrote? So this is her current teacher, Ms. Severson. Carter has worked so hard to be respectful, responsible, and ready since the school year started. She knows her routine and follows it to a T and has taken on even more responsibility as a second grader. If she has a wondering about something changing, which happens a lot at the beginning of the year, she asks calmly and respectfully. She's a patient partner to other students in our class and reminds them in a kind way when they are off track or are not following the group plan. Lastly, she consistently participates in class, not only sharing straightforward answers to questions, but also makes really strong connections with prior learning and things in our own life. This is Carter. We're so proud to honor her tonight.
Carter, go ahead.
You wanna tell them, tell everybody who your family is that you have with you tonight?
First I have my mommy, then I have my sister Ryan, then I have my dad and then my brother Jesse.
You wanna point out the other grownups that are here to like cheer you on? I just.
My kindergarten teacher and my new miss.
Better go give that teacher who is your current teacher a hug. Who's that?
Mrs. Severson.
Well, Carter, one of the things that we are all super excited is to have you join us tonight. Being chosen to be our student spotlight from the primary center is an amazing recognition. So congratulations. Thank you for coming. Thanks, support, all of the family that are here to support you. You're, you're definitely lucky and certainly cherished in our building.
And we want other Vikings to be just like her.
I'm wondering if it would be okay if we go into the hallway with all of your wonderful teachers, principal, family to take a picture, to recognize you. And before we do that, I'm also going to, yes, and Leah Lipska is our board liaison for the primary center. I wanna give you this as a token of our appreciation for everything that you do for the primary center. And I'm just gonna read this. You can this is my first talk at a board meeting. I'm gonna remember that. So it says Mount Horribious School District. This certificate of recognition presented to.
Carter Jesse.
That's you. In recognition of distinguished work as a student of the Mount Horribious School District. Can we give her a round of applause? Should we venture out to the hallway for a quick picture? Is that our case?
Yes. And then you guys want to go like. Ryan, I'm somebody who could come tonight too.
It's too late.
Thanks for being.
Scott and Steve, who brought it, if they had any reflexes. You know, like that's kind of how I felt.
Yeah.
Joel seems to know that area. That kinda made me.
Yeah, the Rotunda is, it's a, it's a, it's separated from all the cities and everything. It's, it's whole little neighborhood, kind of in the middle of nowhere, so if any student escapes, they'll get eaten by a tiger. So I think, I think we're good.
Exactly. And I don't tell, tell too.
Yes, absolutely. But no, I, I mean, if they were staying like in VRBOs downtown Tampa or something.
Yeah, we'd have some reservations.
If they're in, the Rotunda's out in the middle of nowhere, so.
Also be curious to see if like this week changes.
I would say it's the same day.
That's a direct hit to that area.
I know.
I'll be interested to see if my parents are just selling after this week, so.
Are they in there?
Oh, yes.
They have a condo down by Cape Coral. So they're just to the south of there, so they get the storm surge coming right in on that, so we'll see. The, the, they have a seven foot berm in front of their condo. It came right up to the top.
Wow.
It comes over, it's about another two feet and it'll be in the condo, so.
Where are your parents?
Just like Cape Coral.
My parents are by Naples.
Naples, okay, so further south. Yeah, they got the one.
Was it Ian? Yes.
Down there.
Yeah. I mean, my parents were fine, went all around and that was just crazy. And they like just finally all recovered and.
Well, that's what I was hearing stories today of people that just recovered from Ian or were just in the process of finishing up and now they set a five feet of water, they only had like 10 inches this time. Jeez. It's crazy. Makes me appreciate tornadoes.
I was just gonna say. When the Asheville stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I was there last night. I don't know that you all are kicking down.
Oh, really?
People just pull up with cards and they didn't know.
I just have one more thing I wanted to share with the group, my good news. If you have not been to the primary center or the ELC in the back, we've had a vision for a very long time of trying to create some shade space for our kids. If you have been on the primary center playground, you know that truly, if you're unlike cattle, you'd have to go under a tree to get any shade, and actually that's out of our boundaries for our playground. So I am so proud of the partnership we had with our PTO last spring and we pulled some funds together and we were able to create this learning space, play space on our PC playground. We took two of those picnic tables, they're down at the ELC. They do not have umbrellas because they have a shade space down there, but they're down there. You know, we find that kids just, sometimes they wanna bring out a notebook and write. Sometimes they wanna look at cards or fun things together with a peer and you know what they're sitting? They're sitting on the coal ground. And so this has been something we've been trying for, for a long time. My future vision is to create like a shelter area, like you would see at a park, where we could have something, because the community does use our playground spaces. And so eventually I'd love to get there, but with the potential referendum coming our way and the need to kind of reconfigure our external areas anyway, that's definitely a back burner piece. But really proud of and thankful for our PTO and that partnership. Couple of things that I also have seen this morph into that we did not plan for, or I didn't plan for. Actually, one of the teachers was in the room here. There was a student who was just really struggling to get some work done and it was recess time. And I heard this teacher say, you know what, how about I walk out to the picnic area with you? Sit down and get it done in the picnic area and then you can go play. Like magic. Went up to the picnic area, sat down, got that math and helped them understand that math. Five minutes. Boom. It's been a nice learning space. We've had coal classes out there. And the other part, if you stop in at the end of the day, we have families who actually have a spot to wait for their kids, where they're congregating and getting to know each other and having conversations. And I think that's extremely powerful and great as well. So I'm just really proud of this space, so stop in and enjoy it sometime. It was heavily used at homecoming. I quick snapped the picture and sent it to the rest of the PTO. I'm like, oh, look at it. Yeah, we do take the umbrellas in on the weekends. We pop out the top parts for the weekend, but during the week, we just close the umbrellas up and obviously we'll take them in for winter time, but it's just again created a really great space for learning and congregating and socializing, so.
Well, thank you for making the vision to do something like that.
Absolutely. It's been on our mind. Dave Reed, I gotta give him huge props as well. I said, how can we make that space so that it's not mud? And that was, we worked together and shared some budget funds to bring in that pea gravel to really make it a nice spot, so, yeah.
Mud in first graders?
They would like it. Custodians, not so.
Not so much.
Teachers either. Teachers either. Right, Tracy. Yeah. So anyway, I mean, again, I apologize for being late.
No, we're doing so much.
Before we move on to citizen comments, we're gonna go back to a few other school news.
I have two items. Last week at the intermediate center, the fourth and fifth grade had their open house where they got to meet with their teachers and meet with all the specialists. I'm sure that was a great presentation by that school and all their staff. And then this Thursday, the FA is putting on a steak dinner and I think you can get a hot dog. I think it's 5:30 to 7:00. Maybe the time is a little bit off, but if you're hungry and want something new Thursday night, you could get something.
Any other school news? All right, moving on to citizen comments.
There are none. Oh, yes.
I apologize too. I was, I thought it was something like two. I'm just Tracy Lang. I teach second grade and I'm just here representing MHA and I just wanna say thank you all for what you do. It's very thankless serving on the board and you know, you take a lot of time out of your personal lives, so just thank you so much for what you do. And you are not just Tracy. No, but really thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, moving on to number four, personnel transactions. Scott, is there anything that we should? No.
There is an addendum this evening in addition to the one that was posted last week.
Motion to approve of the addendum. Motion by Leah, seconded by Joel to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on, number five, consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to go out to discuss? Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Tom to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion item, committee member reports. Tom, do you mind starting?
Yeah, so the Billy drums team met on September 23rd. Staffing is a really good place overall and maintenance techs are responding to work requests as the school year goes on, things might break down, finer things. Mowing and to do prep is still taking a lot of time with the staff as all the sports are going full, full stream, full power. The fence along the backside of the high school still needs to be finished around the fire hydrants and there isn't really a timetable on that, but working on it. On the transportation side, the badges on the first day of school was a really good success. 274 badges were used and it did help with a couple of kiddos that maybe got on the wrong bus, so it was a useful tool and I think the transportation department was really appreciative of having that tool. Field trips are going already and events are full swing. On November 4th, the Wisconsin DOT will be trans, transmit to a new testing for the CDL licensing. It's important for us. It should be a little bit easier for new bus drivers to get their CDL license as a third party examiner takes care of that. And then the last part we talked about was the electric bus. There's a lot of good discussion on that. We have to decide by the end of November if we will accept the $200,000 grant or not. There's major things to consider that we're gonna discuss at our next meeting, but some of the things we're gonna look at is the overall cost of the bus, the infrastructure needed at the bus garage, the type of charger, and how that electric bus might be able to go back to the grid in the summertime. So lots of things to consider that. Our next meeting is October 28th.
So that was my question when you, you started alluding to it. So then we'd have to get a charger for that bus to put in the bus garage.
And there's three different types. We would be looking at a level three charger, they call it, and it would depend on the type of the bus two and the type of batteries. So there's a lot of, a lot of questions still to answer.
Okay, sure.
Hopefully we have some more answers at the next meeting.
So for the, like, does the grant money cover that or no? Just the bus?
So it doesn't even cover the full cost of the bus.
Okay, okay.
So the bus costs about over $345,000. The grant is for $200,000. So the idea would be to cover what we would normally pay for a bus, plus the grant would cover the cost of electric bus.
Okay, okay.
But we would still probably have to borrow some from, from, I'm not sure which fund it would be maybe skeptical.
Good question. So we're thinking that the bus might be just a tinge over that 345 number, but whatever that overage is, in addition to any cost involved with the actual charging, you know, that infrastructure piece. You know, one thought with the committee was, well, gosh, should we really start thinking about a more robust infrastructure above and beyond just a one level three for one vehicle done? The other thought is because it's our consideration of our first bus, that maybe we take a baby step forward, buy a level three, install it inside the bus garage, have that in place, test out the bus. You know, the goal is to, I mean, utilize this bus like no other, right? Hence the reason to buy it. With the idea that if the district were to ever invest in a bus two, at that point, is it worth really diving more in depth on the more robust infrastructure system? And who knows? I mean, over the next couple of years, what technology might look like, maybe we'll be in a better place. It's not worth that we're going down the road right now that we're saying only level three and nothing else. Nevertheless, you know, we also wanna play it smart and not hit the grand slam. Or you know what, maybe we're gonna hit a single and we're gonna find our way around the diamond first. We just got a notice, what was it, last week, within the last week or something? Yeah, that there's also a new grant coming out for a same opportunity, but we're also intrigued because there's thinking that we may be able to use some of those new grant funds, again, apply, approve and also, you know, so not to put the curve before the horse, but we might have an opportunity to be able to use those funds even for some infrastructure, which would be really, really interesting. And Tom, to your point on the funds, I apologize. We would use fund balance for that overage because fund balance is used while it's, fund balance is not cash, it's an accounting equation, but what it does do is it allows us to use it for a one-time purpose and fund balance really, from a financial point of view, really should only be used for one-time purposes because it defines the health of our district and we can always replenish and keep it stable. And we can always replenish and keep it stable.
And it's not a savings account.
It's not a savings account.
It's not a savings account.
If revenues increase over expenditures in a given year, fund balance goes up. Else, it goes down. That's all that number is. It's not, it's not a cash balance.
Any other questions? Joel, would you like to talk about finance?
Sure. We had a meeting on September ninth, so almost a decade ago. Two things really that we did. One is we had a couple of donations come in. Our Lions Club was $1693 from a stuff the bus, just a cash donation to support school supply needs. And then there was donations from various groups, Gridiron Club, Basketball Club, Corner Kick Club, Volleyball for the huddle technologies so that some of the coaches and people can use for cameras game recording, that kind of stuff. So those were both approved at our meeting. In addition, the, on the fancy new school board that we have, we have all the advertisements and sponsorships. Those came through and they were, for what was out there, they were all under the $10,000 limit. So those were approved at the finance committee level. And so we're, we're all good there. After that, we spent some time talking about how fun October is for school finance. And we got very excited, high-fived and cheered. And then we meet on the twenty-first as a finance committee. And then, of course, the twenty-eighth is when we'll be taking final action as a board on the, Scott already alluded to on the levy and things like that. So that was it.
Joel and Scott will be the next two guest appearances with the Spirit Squad.
And I'm not gonna start most meetings with the hugs. It might be the last hug you get, so.
Thanks for the warning.
Speaking about the scoreboards, my brother is an assistant coach for New Glarus, their high school football team. And they just got a new stadium, right? So he suddenly said, but do you have this cool scoreboard? Yes, our scoreboard is.
Any questions for Joel?
Has there been any discussion about having a school-wide huddle account? Because I know right now each one of those groups has their own huddle account, which is why each one of those groups donates the amount for their own huddle account. But I know we could save quite a bit of money if we had one universal school account.
At the last meeting, there was not, but I will defer to you, Scott.
I don't know that level of detail, but I'd certainly be happy to comment with me about it.
I'm just curious.
Good question.
I'm on the corner case club, so I know how much these things all cost.
I'll be happy to comment.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Anything else? Carly, so?
Excuse me. So we met on the sixteenth of September. Spent most of the time on our, on our standing updates, a lot going on. In our equity update, in some of those things, you've heard about in other contexts since then. So in the equity update, we talked a little bit about the Title IX reading book that came to the full board that same night, a little bit later. Talked a little bit about how the district was still working through the IDI, the Intercultural Development Index. And Brian had had his one-on-one meeting with the assessment on that. Picked a couple of goals and things to work on. And so we're kind of working through those individual assessments at the, at the time. And we're gonna start talking to group about group goals, team goals, that kind of thing. The other equity update is we, last week, accepted the presentation for the convention to talk about our work with Mia Maya that Jessica and I are gonna help out with as best we can. And the first meeting to start propping for that is later this week, Thursday afternoon. Mental health update, we're doing a lot of work to reevaluate or evaluate screeners, which Dr. Slano made a reference to at the workshop. Some of the screeners, there's a one through journey mental health that has real-time response. But then it would indicate that, real-time response meaning somebody can, can look and see with a response and intervene if somebody needs help right away. But the test, the screener does seem to indicate that when you have that, then you need a lot of capacity to intervene with all the kids that need help. So that's one thing to consider. There's another survey that we're looking at, a pin around by which Dr. Slano, go ahead, make a reference to, that goes a little deeper into feelings of connectedness. So takeaway is that there's a lot of different screener opportunities. And some of the buildings are gonna be looking at which ones are, are more appropriate for their students and what we need to know. The other, let's see, some of the other updates from there. We are gonna be able, because of, with the grants, send 12 staff to go to the PBIS forum. And we talked a little bit about the, in Chicago. And we talked a little more about mental health and wellness fair. That was, I mentioned earlier. School safety update. We talked, Brian kind of gave an update on some of the training that we had done for teachers at the beginning of the year, more of the prep, the run fight type training. And just talked about differences in how we approached it since this spring. Coming at it with more of a, of a trauma-informed approach and keeping the focus from, changing the focus from saying things like, there's a very low chance that this will happen to, here's, here's what you did to keep people safe. Let's see, what else in there? We are having at the end of October, David Melby from the Office of Homeland Security, through the Office of School Safety is coming to do a walkthrough of all the buildings and give some non-binding recommendations. We talked a little bit about the task force, which since then has kind of been finalized and informed. And that first meeting is coming up in a couple of weeks. And Julie got an update on school nurses that, that we have Narcan in every building. Epi pens, inhalers are ordered, they're coming soon. And that's, that's it for the standing updates. We talked briefly about the annual schedule for safety and wellness of what we'll review over time. Brian was gonna add just an update on the belonging goal that we talked about and a summary of all of the, the screeners that we do have in place with great help from parent ministers.
Wellness fair thing, did Brian mention of the people that came, how many people stopped to visit the school? I mean, or did he, did he mention it was busy or not busy or?
I stopped by and I think he, I stopped by, I left at around noon or one or so. And he was kind of up out of the way a little bit. But I think it was where they were funneling people coming from, down from the parking lot. So he didn't give me numbers, but it sounded like he had a number of people.
People stopping by.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I know he was kind of tucked out behind all the registration up there and everything, so.
He said he got just, he got a lot of appreciation. Got a lot of people stopping by.
Yeah, yeah. He mentioned that too. So, yeah, I was there after you were there. It was, it was quieter, but I think everybody knew that storm was coming. I watched it and then I was like, bye, Kara, enjoy.
Any other questions for Chris? Adam, talk about the just practice.
Short update from me, I was not able to attend that meeting. But the piece of information that came out of that that we all saw last week was just the bucket fire plan. And what that might translate to at this point, when I had spoken with Nick before the last meeting, they were already gonna shift into planning mode at the end of this year and start gathering input on what might go in, might be used for that 20 acres of dedicated park space. So call up there for folks in the community to make sure that you're making your voice heard on what you wanna see, because that's gonna be the number-one determinant. And then obviously, anything that we can do at the school level, I think, in terms of communicating what we're seeing, our perspective on use of fields and where that might be helpful for, for us since we're all using the same stuff. It's just a matter of whether it's a feeder program coming up or a, or a club sport that helps out off of the same clause.
Thank you. All righty, moving on to six B, our information and advocacy reports. Sarah, there's three boards.
Well, you have a preview to some of our data or workshop retreats. So, but for public reporting, I just wanted to go through a portion of that again, if that's okay? Thank you. Okay, so this report, we look at the percent of students taking one post-secondary course in their high school career. So we look at dual credit and we also look at AP. In the future, we'll get IB as well, but we're future-thinking in bringing the IB language in our goals. Then we'll look at the students, the percent of students who take the test. In this case, AP, but soon IB in their career. And then how many students receive the credits. So traditional structure we've had in the past is I have a front load of the AP and then we'll add the IB piece in and then we'll get to the dual credit as well. So the first table really looks at the percent, sorry, the number and percent of students who are enrolling in the courses. So just because you take an AP course doesn't mean you have to take a test. A lot of our students do, but we can see some number fluctuations between table one, which is our course enrollment, and table two, which is the percent of students taking the test. But you can see on table one that bottom row, the total percent of students taking AP course, we've seen an increase over time the past three years, which is, which is nice to see. Especially after COVID, we had a dip in students taking those courses. But now that number has increased to 33% of the students taking AP courses. In table two, then, again, the exam participation. So we don't get, not, not every student decides to take the AP exam for various reasons. But yeah, just a nice high, high percentage of that, 27.8%.
Sarah, quick question. Do we have any idea of kids who like sign up to take the exam but then drop out of taking the exam? Is that, are you looking for a number, a percentage or who?
Do you have like a rough idea, like, does it happen a lot? Is it rare?
Aren't they automatically enrolled in the test and then they have to like?
No, because you have to pay. You have to pay by a certain date and then.
So it's just a pay.
You have to like make up your mind before you've actually taken the class on if you wanna take the test. Which is usually around now. Yep. And then if you're like, no, I don't wanna take it, then you can ask for your money back, but you only get half of it back. So some students start a course and a couple we said they have to decide whether they are ready to take the exam or they can decide later and not receive the full funding back, as we're saying. So for some students, an AP course is a shift for them. So fortunately, I wish we could give kids more time if they're just following on the timeline with the AP scheduling of when we have to order tests and keep that rolling.
For students that are taking multiple AP courses, do we have any? You can only take three AP courses and then we don't? So of the people that are taking multiple, because we've got, what was it? I was looking at, I gotta look at these numbers again. I mean, 215 AP exam students with 300 exam, AP exams was taken. We've got about a third, at least a third of them taking two, is that typical?
I would see that, yeah. Yeah, I definitely think, easily see kids taking KELC with a science class or psychology with KELC in a science class. There's kids that take three. Some kids take two, some kids take one, yeah.
Sarah, are our percentages similar to schools and districts that are similar to us? In terms of the percent of students that take AP classes and then, then take the test?
So are you asking the, the drop percentage particularly or just in general the percentage?
Just in general.
I've never, I'm sure, I'm trying to think if I could pull that information on a wise dash. I probably could, just haven't got.
I was just curious.
Ooh, I actually, I do think I have a spreadsheet for that.
Imagine.
I don't know, I haven't touched it in a while, actually, because I've been focusing on some other spreadsheets. So that could be something we could look at.
Yeah, I mean, just as we're trying to encourage students to take these AP classes, are we already at a good percentage or are we a little behind? I mean, again, it does, it's just out of curiosity, that we should be measuring ourselves.
Pretty good percentage in the past, I don't know, the past couple of years. I don't know if it's the most recent years, but the, the high school was honored as like bronze or silver stamps for percent of students or increasing the percent of students who are taking AP exams. So I can look back at that, see if we put in this board report though.
Yeah, curious. That's a breakdown by enrollment probably too, right? Because I know just anecdotally that a lot of schools at the college level or a lot of students at the college level come in with a ton. And they, but they have so many more offerings. It's just kind of different DNA that a lot of those schools, larger schools.
We don't have any like anecdotal insight or anything around the, why it's a higher ratio of students that opted out from the test this year or last year than previous years?
I do not have any anecdotal information for that.
I was just wondering if it's money, if it's?
I, I don't know. We'll, we'll get to the chart in a little bit. But when we had the physics piece where students were going online for the physics test.
I wondered if that was physics.
And then as the students progressed in the online, they realized that the physics AP exam maybe would be something that would be good for them at that point. So we did have some students drop from that. That's only anecdotal piece that I can think of right now.
Yeah, I wonder how much it's.
We also are really working to make sure we can break down students by demographics. I have it here in this report, I have, I fixed it in the live version, so I apologize. Where is that here?
Three percent.
Is it thirty-three?
Yeah, thank you. Yep, it's supposed to be thirty-three.
Really, really break it up, Scott.
I miss you right now. So, yes. It's all I heard as you were doing that.
You've spoken before. I always rush her. I really do. I'm aware of it.
So trying to break down again our information by demographics. So we can see on the far-right column, that's the total of percentages. And we want those percentages hopefully to be exactly the same as the columns to the left. Overall, pretty good. The gender piece, males and females, not as good as, as where we would like it to be. Yes, we want it to be thirty, fifty, fifty. Right now, as the team pointed out, it's not three percent of males, it's 33% of males taking AP exam. So something we're aware of, something we'll continue to work on. And it'd be interesting to see how IB also shakes out and looking at that too. Okay, Scott, thank you. And we can see over time, you're good. We can see over time, we've had also an increase, which is nice to be back to where we typically have that in the percent of students who have received typically a three or higher in order to get the AP credit. So we're at that 82%, which is as high as, thank you, Scott, which is the highest it's been in five years. Glad you had a call.
Interesting definition.
As I mentioned, we would get to this visual of how our students are performing. In the, most of the classes, we do have a couple of exams that students take that don't have classes attached to them, calculus, BC, then English, Lang and Comp. Students sometimes take those tests independently. And in this case, they did well, which is great. They have that strength there. As I mentioned, the physics piece, right, we had five students take it. I'm pretty sure we had more than five students signed up at that time when school year started. But students realized that would, an online AP physics course may be a challenge. And it was, right? You can see, we can see the results there. But it looks like it's a challenge. We look, I have the national percentages this year and you can see it's a challenge. Fifty-three percent of tips typically even with a teacher pass AP physics.
I've anecdotally like seen so many colleges that don't even take it, the credit for physics.
And that's also, kids are getting smarter.
It's their money.
Yeah. They're doing the learning, but do they have to take the test?
Right.
Yep, they're getting savvy that way. But, you know, some great successes to see the AP Biology at 100%. AP US Modern, AP US History, 100%. So those are some real successes. Obviously, all of our sort of surgeon grade, but those are just some highlights from this past school year.
Is that specific to physics?
I don't know. I mean, that's like Helen's experience, like all of hers transferred. But every engineering school she talked to, they wouldn't, yeah.
A lot of the lab-intensive ones, certain schools won't take them. Chemistry, physics, the ones where you need hands-on.
Yep.
In lab experience.
It's part of their sequence program, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
It makes sense.
It's just kind of, I don't know if it makes sense, but it's, it is what it is.
Yeah. There's a rationale. There's a solid rationale.
There's a, yes, there's a thought, yeah.
Dual credit, we've been working to increase our dual credit programming, either through MC, which is Madison College, or BHT, which is Blackhawk Tech. Uh, so you can see over time, the past six years, um, the enrollments, um, as it's either fluctuated because it's being offered every other year or you've had small cohorts go through. Uh, but also you can see some courses adding on over time. So at the bottom, we grow, we grew up to about twenty-nine percent of students taking a dual credit class, which is great. Uh, hopefully those will increase, especially with the partnership with IB, finding those dual credit classes in that, um, CTE area or two-year college track would be great as well. And then the last piece, um, that I just highlighted was, uh, a paragraph right there at the top about starting our CAP program with our Spanish five. That's another way that students can have that college experience class with their teacher. Yeah, Mr. Swengen went above and beyond. Uh, he studied abroad, went to Spain for two summers with his family to get his master's in art to do this. Because you need your master's in order to be an adjunct professor. So he's considered an adjunct, adjunct professor at University of Oshkosh. So that was really great to see, um, our staff members just continuously advocating and going above and beyond. And they're learning to make sure kids get what they need. So, um, again, great record. We're seeing an uptick in where we want to see an uptick. And next year. Yeah, next year we'll maybe have some IB participation numbers at least.
I have a question on dual credit. How does a kid know that they got the dual credit?
They should have a transcript because they have to enroll through Madison College.
So, but they, they wouldn't get anything from their high school teacher? They'd have to like log into their Madison College account to like see those?
Yeah, part of, um, usually this information is provided to students by the teacher about how to access that. Uh, but typically, I'm trying to think. Typically, the teacher submits the grade to Madison College. And then there should be on a Madison College transcript, the teacher that would have, it would be the same grade that would be on their transcript from Al Gore.
Okay.
Right?
I'm just curious. I have a kid who took one and I was like, did you get credits? He's like, I don't know.
We have that also as typically a B or C or better too. Yep.
Okay. I mean, I know that they do all the enrollment and all the paperwork in class.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
Yes.
It's all done. It's just where it is.
He was concussed.
Where you find the.
He was concussed at that point, so.
His mom had to quick fill out all the paperwork during the timeline because he couldn't go on the computer, so.
Well, you should know how to log in and find it then.
I think.
You should, you should have it somewhere, that, that one-time login.
It was a straight-up panic situation.
So do we have any data on the amount of students that did both dual credit and AP?
I think, I think we're talking about that for a future workshop. Dash course?
Yeah, that's a dash course piece. I'm just curious if we had that.
That's where you wanted to put it altogether.
That's our word salad.
Word salad.
It's our word salad.
It was very well thought out.
We're gonna refund that tomorrow as a salty, figure that out.
And then scroll back up to the dual credit piece. Is there, I, I just noticed this. Is there a reason why, it looks like the essentials, Microsoft Essentials, it was not offered at all?
It was, it was, um.
Why are those gray versus white? Is that just a?
Why are those white versus gray?
Yeah. Yeah, is there any reason for that?
Uh, for some reason, I wasn't, I wasn't tracking that data at that point, so I made it sure to get this year in.
Got it.
Um, and it also changed not, probably three or four years ago, it changed the structure of it. So I need to get historical data in for you.
And then the only other thing is on a class like a physics or anything like that. I know some of those classes are offered at the technical school as well. Are there any ways to do, it's where we're not having luck on the AP side? Is there any way to, when that was a dual credit? I'm not sure. I don't even know.
You still need a teacher to teach it.
Okay, got it. Yep.
An in-house, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions?
Just a minor, they just need a teacher.
Actually goes down to that.
Right.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to like, I read this and I read the comments about Ms. Allen doing all the extra work to get that stuff going. And Mr. Swengen doing extra work. And so I do, I just wanted to recognize and appreciate the above and beyond stuff that the teachers are doing. Especially when you look at like the increases here and then the, you know, knowing physics is an anomaly, but all those kids that, that got really good grades. Really awesome.
Yeah, we're very fortunate with our staffing. Very fortunate with our staffing.
Awesome. Uh, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, guys.
You don't walk away because you're.
Am I next?
You're next.
Action, I'm thirty?
Right onto action.
There you go.
Good for me. Okay, I have my notes over here if that's okay. Okay, so academic integrity policy.
Yeah, those are all three the same, Scott.
So.
We can do it again. The first one.
So we're nine to seven A.
Sarah, which one would you like first?
Do I respond?
Or the?
The normal one, please. Continue policy. Thank you.
Okay.
So academic integrity, so this is a new policy for the district. I think, um, somewhere I read it, it says a revised policy, but not, it's a new policy for us. We revised it twice, still in education, played around with it. So this, this policy was, we thought about creating this policy because with the addition of our IB program and the emergence of AI, artificial intelligence, um, there was a need to have an academic integrity policy. We didn't have one in our school district at, at that point. So the committee members reviewed this policy at the August meeting and the September meeting. Made some, some, some minor language changes. Also thinking about the behaviors and consequences piece. And, um, the committee then from the September meeting decided to, to bring it to the fore here in October. Not very long policy. Um, again, just putting it out there that that's, um, this is here and will be in our handbooks. Language will be in our handbooks moving forward.
So this one that's on here doesn't reflect the one that's redlined. So which one are we being asked to approve? This one has fluff and stuff, which is why I asked.
Thanks, yep. Let's go back to the red, let's go to the red line.
Just checking, I can, we can talk about the fluff and stuff if I want to.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was noticing that the family that wasn't in there, I was like, I think we talked about that.
Yep. So this would be correct. You're correct, Leah. I'm just looking over again one more time. Okay, we can do a couple of things. We can talk about this policy or I'll bring you back a really pretty clean brush one or we can go from there.
We've already talked about it twice in committee, so I would, would, I, I, if people feel like we need to talk about it, come back to it. But I'm also not concerned about not passing a pretty version. So does anyone else?
Hi.
This is the proposed version.
We can. As long as we're all like going off the same version, I don't care.
I agree. Helen, I know you're right for all my questions.
I'm not on this committee, so.
I would move to approve the redline version of policy.
We're gonna do it. Okay, we'll get a second and then we'll return to questions.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Sarah, seconded by Tom, to approve our new policy for forty-three point nine. Any further discussion?
I have questions.
Okay, so what is, and there's like, what is it, what is a behavior that may disadvantage another student? Is also regarded as academic misconduct? Like that sentence is so weirdly vague that I don't know what, like, what does that mean?
Yes, I do have that note in my, at committee minutes. But the team talked through in September when I wasn't there. So I'm wondering if this is the correct version. So I'm looking at.
I'm looking, see if it's in those who were at the meeting.
I know we talked about.
We did talk about it.
I thought we were going to come back with some examples. That's, I just thought.
Do you want to address my questions?
Sure, why not? We'll, we'll tackle them now.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll get them, right?
Okay. Okay, Leah, what do you got?
Okay, so we talk about, um, academic work that contains material information derived from other sources and examples are there. Um, that are not acknowledging the creation or final submission of the academic work. So they use a program when they create their PowerPoints and I cannot remember what it's called and want to say.
Canva?
Thank you.
Yep.
That creates images for them, like they put in whatever. And it, I don't think it cites sources and cites those, but the program itself is creating them. So technically, the way this is written, that program then violates the academic.
Can you, can you tell me which paragraph we'll get it in?
Uh, the first paragraph where we say, we list, um, uh, it's the second sentence, I think.
A student engages in academic dishonesty when individual students, so that's that one.
You mean the generative technologies part?
Yes, and so the example is generative technologies. And after that, it says that are not acknowledged in the creation or final submission of the academic work. So that software program creates the images. And I don't think it cites it or sort like.
Yeah, but is that any different than like you're working in Microsoft Office and you create a table? And it like makes the table look pretty for you.
It's technically AI. And it, okay, here's what I've been, I had a kid who, who got a misunderstood how to use like AI. Like they were trying to make stuff pretty. It, it didn't go over well. So we're like, okay, we're not going to do that. The very next day had an assignment to create a PowerPoint using this software that creates images for you. So it's exactly what we said, don't do. And now we have this software that's doing it. So I just want to be very clear in what our, like, I understand what our intentions are. But right now, like that software would violate our own policy and it's the software we tell the kids to use.
Right, because I use Canva on a daily basis at work. So Canva, I mean, it generates templates.
Right, like one of, it was like create a World War Two picture with four guys on a beach.
Yeah.
And it will create this image. It is completely AI-generated. So it's using generative technology to create that. It doesn't source it and say this was created by Canva or this was created by AI. So it's different. But the student would acknowledge it. The student needs to acknowledge where the source, what they, so they create it with Canva.
So, right, yeah.
That's, that's the intent. Okay, I think it's slippery slope. Because when I, when I say, when I think acknowledge the creation, I'm thinking you're, you know, writing all of your sources. Like, I got this from this article and I got this from this article. And these are just coming out of thin air, so.
I think that's what the generative AI is though.
Right, it's a creation as opposed to a sourcing of information.
Right, but we're saying you can't use generative technologies, which is what.
We're saying you can, but you need to.
That are not without citation. Right, but Canva itself isn't sourcing that secret.
No, it's creating it, so we have to cite Canva.
So you cite Canva because, yeah.
So then we have to make that specifically clear to staff to teach kids that, because that is, that is not in the.
But honestly, it's, if, it, because if you're using Microsoft Word, you're inserting a Clipart image. I mean, it's, so it's, you know.
Right, it's, it's kind of a weird, like, I just want to be extremely clear because academic dishonesty is a very scary label and a very scary thing to say to a kid. You are being academically dishonest. But they're using the software we gave them. I just want to.
Canva, I would think is different than using ChatGPT to write an article or write an essay, right? Like Canva is something that's used globally to help you, you know, make graphics and, and marketing pieces.
And I had never used it, so I was like.
I use it all the time. It's, it's really not like going on Bing Create and hitting, create me an image of blah, 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 and it pulls it together. It's different because you really have to, like, there's templates in there that they have preset, just like Microsoft Word has preset Clipart images, right?
Okay.
It's not necessarily like going on the ChatGPT and say, write me an essay about.
Five hundred words about blah, blah.
It's totally different. It's totally different, yeah.
So just. But to generalize it though, like you're right about the specifics of Canva. Like you could have a program that does AI images and still legit use them as long as you're acknowledging it.
Right.
Where they came from. Under the wording of this.
And it will be.
Which would be.
It will, will require teaching from staff and telling students, okay, in draft form, you can use X, Y and Z AI generated to get to this point. Source it. Now, let's go from there and use our brains and revise and edit for tone or audience or flow or anything. So I've already had this conversation with our English team. We need to let kids know and direct them when they can and can't and how to source and not, well, they won't teach them how not to source, how to source.
Yeah.
And that's where the admin rig comes in, which I knew this a while ago. So I believe we've started, um, laying those stuffs out for staff. And staff also have a training on October fourteenth. One or two trainings for, for about ninety minutes, an hour, ninety minutes about ethics and AI and starting those conversations.
Question, first about Canva, present a Canva expert, and then broader question. What I heard you say is that Canva generates images.
It can.
I don't think it does.
It is, there is an AI generator that can create images.
Okay.
Yeah, because I watched my kid do it, so I know it creates. And I was like, I, I don't know if you're allowed to do this or not, but it's in the software that they're telling you is in the syllabus to use. So I, I don't know, like, as a parent, I was like, I, I don't know where this is in the line. Like I was like, I, it's, it is creating them.
How do we draw them? Okay, so and this is.
We're asking big questions, by the way, like, that's what everyone's asking.
Separate, separate from Canva, I don't want a fictitious World War Two photo being turned in as an assignment.
But here's the thing too, okay, so from the perspective of what you're using. So if you're using Canva versus saying you're using Adobe InDesign to create a marketing piece, right, or graphic. InDesign, you have to import all the pictures, okay? Where are you getting those pictures from? Right, you could also be pilfering images off the internet that are copyrighted and you're going to get in trouble versus Canva, which uses images that, if there are images that are within that, if you have a license to use Canva, you're, you're good, like. It doesn't necessarily.
Library that you're drawing from.
There are images in there, um, but if you're doing pretty basic stuff, it's not, I mean, that's, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know. I don't know where you draw.
You say they have a library of licensed photos that you're drawing from?
Well, yeah, if you, if you type in Canva and you, you're gonna make a Facebook post and you say, and you want to search for a template for, um, Fourth of July Facebook post or whatever. It'll give you a bunch of different ones, like different designs and whatnot. Some have pictures in there, which are Canva has license too.
Right.
So you are able to use it.
Right.
Type thing, so I don't know.
So we, we need more explicit direction in teaching to students and staff of citation.
And families. And families.
And families.
Hundred percent, like, as the person who's going to get asked from the kid when they're not at school about what they're supposed to do, that's a hundred percent. Still struggle with that. Still struggle, but you're going to come back with examples of what, um, examples of dis, dis, disavantaging other students, because I don't still quite understand that.
I think copying off another student would be an example of that. Because now they're also going to.
Stealing their paper.
Or stealing their paper. Those are the kinds of things.
Those are the things that we're looking at.
Yeah.
I've got the intent of that statement.
And maybe there's just a different way to word it, because like that just, like, I could see a student be like, well, they disadvantaged me because they took class in the afternoon at the co. Like, I don't know, like, I, that's not misconduct, but I, I just, I don't want to, I don't like when policies are vague and have weird language.
So may harm another student?
That's, that's hard to, how do you, how do you define?
I'm just curious if that's, if it's the wording thing or if it's a.
If the intent is don't steal other people's work, then that's, that's the language we need. Like, may disadvantage another student, just, it doesn't. And you guys.
Like plagiarism from another student or.
Right, like you could, you could tell me to, that I'm the only one that's stuck on this and that's perfectly fine, but.
Or student A got an A for something student B didn't. We just talked about Wisconsin guarantee and GPA. Or student A got an A for something student B didn't, we just talked about Wisconsin guarantee and GPA.
Right.
And the importance of that, there's there's different layers to how a student can be disadvantaged, it can be a very big thing, you think of academic excellence scholarship, right? Or it could be smaller of stealing, not smaller, I'm saying, but.
Right.
Or.
Is there another policy at all that references the definition of this at all?
That's what this policy is.
Like just that piece that disadvantaged another student and.
No, we don't have.
Okay.
We don't have.
I mean, my interpretation of this, like, it's it's really hard to write something that's super specific to every situation that can happen. And my my interpretation of what the intent of that is, is that if I'm a student and I do something that messes with another kid's grade. That is just as bad as if I cheated or. Did something, you know?
That it's intentionally vague to serve as a little bit of a blanket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually.
Which, which. The midrate comes in.
Right.
Yeah, the how, right?
Yes.
We have to keep it open.
We do, you can't write them for every, for every situation, and and maybe it's just I can't get behind what that means, like.
I will use generative AI.
And see when it comes up.
And I will figure it out, or I'll use it in the starters, one or the other.
And and maybe it's as simple as saying that and saying examples of this include blah, 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 and that might just be enough for me to wrap my head around it, but I'm still struggling so hard with that sentence. And then we kind of also, then we jump to, um, students are expected to reflect academic integrity by doing their own work, correctly citing sources. And refraining from providing access to materials or information so that others may dishonestly claim credit, like, obviously, we don't want them to post it on the internet so someone else can steal the work. I a hundred percent get that, and maybe if some of that is up, the other paragraph, it seems weird as its own, like, I get we're doing, students are expected to do this and staffs expect to do this. But the whole top part is what we expect students to do, so maybe if that paragraph is up, if my brain would connect the two, I don't know. I'm really struggling with this policy. And it might just be, which is fine, it usually is. Um, I also, I get that we say that this is gonna be handled like by the building administrators and staff and teachers, but how? And this may be this, this is obviously not in the policy, but in the head or main, how are we making sure that we are being equal and equitable in the same situations? Right, like, we have, if you're, if you're, do this thing, this is the punishment, and in this case, it's kind of like, kind of depends. And so I don't know how I feel about that either.
I think unfortunately, because this is such a new world.
New thing and it could be huge.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how we get that formulaic.
My favorite thing is to watch the teachers who put sneaky stuff in their assignments so that they can catch the kids using ChatGPT, those are my favorites.
I, to answer your question. Kids have been cheating.
Correct, yes.
What?
Not mine, but, um, so the steps are already there, we're adding AI piece in, yeah. Um, we're creating a policy around this, so. I I would say that's that's probably the most intact or the most defined piece already in our buildings is how buildings already handle cheating. It's already been in handbooks for a very long time, we haven't had an academic integrity statement attached to it.
Right, and then, so maybe, so the the sentence that says building administrators will support teachers in determining appropriate consequences. That that's the part that seemed kind of, like, if we already have consequences for cheating. I don't know, I don't know why I'm struggling with this policy so much, but I really am, and I apologize because I know you guys have come on this in education a couple of times.
Do you support the policy?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent need the policy, I just need it to make sense in my brain, and I don't know that it will, because, again, like, at my work, they're like, oh, yeah, stick that email in ChatGPT and make it sound better. It's like, okay, so.
Which is fine if it's part of the process and you name that in the process.
Right.
Which is, I'm not citing that on my work email, that I'm telling someone to pay their bill in a nice way, if my email was snotty and so I put it in ChatGPT, so would it be? Not telling that, but.
Cited for tone change. Maybe, maybe we should take the students are expected to reflect academic integrity and just put it at the beginning, just before all forms. So we're setting the expectation for students and then we go into what's not. Oh, a definition?
So that.
So that's all part of that.
Whole sentence, opening up the policy.
Would that maybe make a bit of a connection with what we're, you're looking at there, Leah?
I think so.
Okay, that's that's the easiest fix I can do.
And then related to the last piece that you brought up, the building administrators are expected to assist and support teachers in determining appropriate consequences. That are aligned to the admin regulation or are aligned to district identified policies and procedures or, you know, like, something that references that. It is based on not just their subjective decision, but that there is some sort of guideline.
Right, because we have them, right, and maybe it's just a matter of cross reference, and it might already be there, I I looked at this a few times, I mean, we talked about it, it's in the student handbook, but. Yes, the district behavior standard, is it in there? There was a chart at one point, I can't keep all these policies straight anymore.
Jessica, just, I was writing what Joel had said as you were saying that, so for the administrator paragraph.
Well, Leah was concerned about that they should have more guidance, so I was just saying, like, make some sort of respiration that they are expected to assist and support teachers in determining appropriate consequences that are aligned.
Oh, yeah, aligned with consistent.
Aligned to consistent with whatever current district behavior standards.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I mean, that really is all I need, and then it, for some reason, clicks in my brain, so.
For you now.
AI is a beast, it really is, it's kind of like all of us in ways that we can't even imagine, you know?
The software that I use, like, they they are building AI into it and I sat through the the thing and they're, they're like, they're like, oh, yeah, it it'll script for you now. You just put in in English what you want to do, hit the button, it'll generate scripting and, but I had a straight up panic attack and.
Stuff we're supposed to use is supposed to listen to our conversations and pull out a to do list from. Do everything all together and fill out paperwork for clients and all this stuff, and I'm like, yeah, that's a no.
So, yeah, like, we're, yeah, it's a whole new world.
Sarah, one last comment, since I always want to adapt something that I urged us to do originally, in that, in the administrators, that first line, are expected to support academic integrity. I think I advised why trying to lump too much in to that one sentence. And I would say go back to by promoting the district's policy of academic integrity, comma, and encouraging blah, blah, blah. To educate students, send families out, out it, or something along those lines, promoting and encouraging is just too much.
Okay, so separate that.
Yeah, yeah.
Adam, would you mind even on what you were just saying?
Yeah.
You have the easier.
Sure.
That's okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
My pleasure.
Other comments, questions?
This is coming back, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. It's ChatGPT and come back with something different.
Stop, just like.
Watch the tone now.
Oh, that's it, yep, we'll change.
Check it for tone.
Um, so we have to make it, we have to table officially, right?
It's first meeting, so we don't, we don't have.
But we already made.
I made a motion, but. So you could withdraw.
Yeah, I'll just withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to do this again, Sarah?
I saw the one page and I was like, this will be quick. Sorry.
I made a note to Leah prior, so you can hit it all over.
I really should just come that you're guys, like, enjoy education.
Your stuff, sorry.
Well, the thing is, if we look at it twice or three times, then we get really comfortable with it, so we're like, oh, yeah, 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 so it's good to have.
I mean, the same thing happens at SO, we'll be like, oh, yeah, we went to this, and you guys will be like, hey, what about this thing, you're like, oh, we totally missed that.
That's my report.
That's why we do this.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah, appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, moving on, all right, citizens' comments.
Anything else you'd like to share?
This is fascinating to me, the AI. My secondary doesn't really have to worry about it, I haven't yet, but. Number nine, future agenda items, if there's anything that you would like to discuss, just let me or Dr. Sarah know. And then number ten, schedule of our next meeting.
So a couple of things to point out, um, Joel pointed out earlier, thank you, finance committee is not next Monday, the fourteenth. As traditional, second Monday, it's the following Monday, the twenty first, so finance committee the twenty first, virtually at four thirty. Followed by safety and wellness committee at five thirty, virtually. Then that leads us to the fourth Monday in October, BGT will be meeting at four thirty, virtually, and then the full board will be meeting here at six thirty. And then, gosh, we're into the month of November with an education committee at five thirty and a board meeting at six thirty.
All right. It's all moved. Good. Well, my Leah, seconded by B, add them to enter, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.